I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for being here. Not if you pulled. That's for Dana. What is your pleasure with the consent of?
I'm going to be at the meeting as presented.
Second?
All in favor? Next select board meeting Thursday, June 15th, here at 5:30. Do we have any select board comments, announcements?
Um, yeah, go ahead.
So, when are we gonna be doing the signs, Mr. Vino? I had a neighbor ask me that.
Yes, I ordered it. I ordered one so far. So, we're waiting for that to come in. We're going to go down and post that.
All parts, I think, I just let her know I told her to come here tonight.
I duly ordered it, so I don't know what the timeframe is. But it is on order. It shouldn't take very long.
It'll take a couple of weeks.
At the most, yeah. They're pretty quick. We just got the, um, information, the report from the consultant, from GNI consultant, who was doing the...
Oh, the survey?
The survey on the landing. Um, so, we just got that yesterday. So, I'm gonna try to digest that and come to the next select board meeting. We'll put Sabino on the agenda for next time. So that if we need to put out more signs or do other work down there, I think Marine Resources had some ideas for what they might see down there. We can talk about that.
Right. I just wanted to note that the expenditure that we approved for the landscaping upstairs up front has been made, and it looks good.
It looks good?
Very nice job.
Who put the multijet?
I don't know.
Oh, you did?
Julie's in the front row, you're on the team.
Right on. I wasn't aware of that. Kudos to the partner and Julie.
Business item number one, consideration and award of boundary survey, RFP, Town West Bath and City of Bath. Three proposals were received in response to requests for assistance of a professional land surveyor to verify, to the extent possible, the location of a portion of the leaker boundary between the Town West Bath and the City of Bath. The three people were, is it Neju? Land surveys. Lump sum not to exceed nine nine, nine thousand nine hundred. Surveyable techniques lump sum to cost eight thousand eight hundred. Sightline fixed fee of six thousand nine hundred. The City of Bath is prepared to proceed with sightlines based on the terms of the RFP and the submitted proposal. The town administrator recommends the same.
So, is that our fee or half of that? What does that pay there?
Um, we would be responsible for half of that.
And sightline has the most... Is already aware of everything?
But, yes, they already have a fair amount of research that's completed. Bruce is definitely interested in the project. He has been engaged, you know, ever since Mike has been talking with him about the boundary. Um, I think he'll probably be the most responsible as far as timeframe goes. And, yeah, I really look forward to working on that.
I'm that we proceed with sightlines in view of the fact that they are the lowest bidder and have experience with the Town West Bath.
My second bet, all in favor? Town administrators, you thought?
Well, we have Steve here tonight for a couple of, um, road errands that came up during the week. Uh, the first one that we should talk about is Kim Murphy got in touch. She is asking about when we might schedule some sort of a site visit to go down to a property and see where the issues are so we could come to some sort of conclusion. So, Steve, do you want to talk about that?
Well, basically, I still stick to my guns and what I said from the beginning. She don't like it. Um, that's the rules that we've made and always followed. If you guys would like to do something different, I'd be more than glad to go down with you, show you the situation, explain it to you. I just can't see us going on haring and making ditch lines going down by her house and everything else. And it's not our responsibility. And if I was to cover it going across the road there, what happened to do it? It started getting plugged with leaves and stuff. Uh, we had that rain, snowstorm where the snow didn't get pushed back enough, and that was a big issue there. But other than that, everything's been working fine after these three or four three-inch rainstorms we've had.
Am I correct in saying, or didn't you get down and clean that culvert? Or...
Yeah, that's got that a couple of tides.
So, this is, we had one issue that changed to us earlier from, was it snow runoff, the first one? How did, was there another substantial issue when that last storm came through? I didn't go over it again.
There was no issue.
So, another thing, we didn't have a culvert overflow when we had that significant rain?
No, 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 that was me. So, I mean, I wasn't there when it really came down high because that was like three o'clock in the morning.
But we would've seen it, you know?
Right. Yeah, there would've been evidence of what had been.
So, there wasn't one. At this last debacle of a storm, there was no problem.
Exactly. So, basically, for me to go any further or ask to do anything, I really don't want to go any further without you guys' permission or telling me, you know, maybe what, I mean, she's...
Is she asking for public expenditure on her property?
She's asking for us to fix a ditch line that's going down by her house where the runoff from the whole side of the mountain there, where reeds live up top there. Well, all the water comes down the side, and it's gotta cross that road somewhere. It crosses the road by her house. So, meanwhile, it keeps her lawns all wet and saturated down through there. So, basically, you pretty much have to run her hell out all the way to the river.
To the pool, right.
Right. And that's landscaping work that should be in her expense. I mean, she's the owner of the signed building.
And that's what, that's what the attorney's advice has been through the years, hasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
So, if our town culverts overflow onto someone's property, what is protocol for that, generically? If it creates damage from our culvert?
Well, that's, I would question.
It doesn't? I'm gonna, I'm saying any culvert, not that, I'm generically speaking.
We don't have a protocol. So, if wasn't that culvert there before the house?
Yeah. I mean, the road was there before. All that stuff was there before. What happened is basically Athena went down through there and inbed her a ditch to make the water go down through. So, it wasn't planned years and years ago. Now, she thinks that's something the town should make, and they keep going for it. And that's why you can't do that stuff because they did it once and now automatic they wanna...
David?
I recall that, and I do believe that was not done as a town project. It was something that I did as a contractor. I don't believe he did it as a town road commissioner. I don't know that.
So, I'm saying not this location, generically speaking. Do, what is a protocol if one of our culverts is a town culvert?
Yeah, but we put the culvert in before she put her house.
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that.
If we put a culvert in and then you go and build a house, that's no problem, no harm.
I think it depends on what the circumstances are.
I can understand what Suzanne's saying. If we had a floodwater, we washed out somebody's driveway.
That's what I'm asking, what is...
We were fixing.
So, we need to, I guess, understand and set a precedent on how the town behaves. If it's not, so there's no question, from one to the other, it's a standard that... Because there's other areas that we've had problems on Sabino Road that had to be addressed, so...
One in a row, this is the driveway, right?
No, it's our road culvert.
No, that's what I was, what happens is when the ditch line gets full, it runs down the road, and the road's tilted towards her driveway, but that's the closest nearest road it is.
And that's what water does.
Right.
I'm trying to, I understand it.
I'm trying to understand.
I'm trying, I'm trying, because we've had, it needs to be consistent.
Exactly.
Across, and I, my point is, there's, we need to set a consistent standard that everybody follows.
The consistent standard is that if it's our culvert, our, and it causes damage, then the town fixes.
If our culvert fails.
But what she is asking for is not for the culvert to be fixed, but for the town to do public work on her private property.
But the waters from the culvert is what is creating the gully?
No.
Yes.
What caused the gully?
According, no, that happened to the...
What happened is this culvert got plugged with slosh. So, Mother Nature put a bunch of rain on us, and only place that water could go was down her driveway. There's nothing we could stop to help that. I have another issue right now on rock weed and the land in the road. At the end of their driveway, it drops down this much with the water that comes down off the long side of the road. I just came back and looking at that. And it's a plugged culvert there on her driveway that they never took care of or maintained. So, now the water's going over that road and washing out the water.
Two questions, is that our culvert or their culvert?
Exactly. This, this, I want.
So, when there's a culvert at the end of an individual's driveway, it goes, it's their driveway. It's their culvert. When a culvert goes under a town road, it is our culvert. Is that correct? So, I just, I think we should just put it, because I had said on Sabino Road when that work was being done, a couple of culverts in the driveway, are they gonna fix the culvert? I'm like, no, that's your culvert. That's not our culvert. So, we should maybe put a statement in place on how the owners of culverts, just to, to a standard that people understand.
Well, that's why you've got me. I don't make the judgment whether that's our fault or their fault for not being careful, you know? Down there, there's a few things that we could, might do, but I don't dare to dig, dig a bigger ditch down there on the mountain road and have the road push everything down. It's very narrow down through there. The ditch is quite deep now. It's over two feet deep. It was just that the culvert got plugged up with branches, leaves, and sloshed.
And that was a town culvert that got...
That was a town culvert. And furthermore, this is, this is, three years ago, I talked to the town administration, you know, what would I like? Or what I'd like to have an employee that I could send out and do this kind of stuff. You get, in the fall, you get all the leaves, excuse me, all the leaves fall, all the branches go in, little maintenance, stuff like that. We don't have a municipal crew, right? That's why I wish that we could hire a guy that we could send out, hang these signs up that we get that fall, we get knocked door up, mow the lawn here in the town or whatever. We have enough work to keep a guy busy and have people a lot happier doing little tiny things.
That's a significant expense when you've got insurance, truck, and everything else.
It is, or isn't it?
It is.
Well, we now, we hire up a crew to go do a ten-minute job. We have to pay three people in the box. You can take care of the plowing for the towns. You can take care of the mowing. You can take care of fixing up the baby eyes. It's numerous stuff here. They can be fixed sanding, trimming roads back. They can be picking out trash if somebody saw a bunch, you know? There's plenty of work for one guy. So, yes, you're right, there is a big expense, but we're gonna give our town people something. When they call and eat something bad, it's a lot better to have a guy around whether it's just a temporary fix until we do something better or we can't just expect to call somebody and get it done and tell them dinner. It's not happening.
As far as, as the Murphy property goes, I think that we do not make, we do not do landscaping on private land. And, and we've been through this issue in the past, and that's been the answer that she's been given in the past. And I don't see anything that's going to, that makes it changeable at this point.
Would it be appropriate to have a site visit to bring it to closure officially? We've done other site visits.
I think so.
I mean, just to, just to bring it to closure one way or the other, and we, whether they're, we see it, we understand it, and finalize the plan?
Then, I have a problem with that.
I mean, we've done other site visits, and I think it shows.
My problem is, as a board, what we tend to do is do a site visit, and then we stay undecided for the next year, two years. Just, it tends to be an end.
Right. And my, that's what I've been saying, telling her for the last five years I've been on, okay? It's the same incident.
And, and the attorney has said the same thing.
Right. And...
Do we have an official response from our attorney? Did we get one?
Um, there, in years past, about the same issue, yes. And that opinion was in the packet that was presented to us earlier when the storm damage happened in the winter.
A lot of things has a control on everybody's driveway. I mean, how many people has had problems with their driveways in this last year? A lot of people, a lot of people spent a lot of money just to get in and out of their driveways.
Three feet of water in my basement that had never happened in a hundred and thirty days.
Exactly. And that wasn't, the main culvert thing got plugged up with slosh. Okay? Water don't run through slosh. I mean, even if it was snow on the road and it ran out, it was, it just happened. The ground was soft. We didn't get the ground to freeze hard. Absolutely. It rolled somewhere, red driveway. That's called maintenance. I don't...
And the town is not responsible for the weather?
Correct.
But we are responsible to maintain the town culvert and not have floods.
And that damage was repaired, is what I understand it.
That's why I'm leaving it up to you.
You say that, Suzanne, and then we get five issues of rain, and we have six or seven plugged culverts, and then we expect a road commissioner to go down and jump on it. And that's not what a road commissioner is.
No, he, we, no.
And then we have...
He's not the only one responsible to do this. We have people that we've admired in that as well.
That doesn't happen that quickly. People are extremely busy. If you can't get a contractor to do culverts in a timely manner, it's not gonna happen.
No, it's impossible, it's impossible to be as responsive as we should be under those circumstances, the way that we're set up.
Correct. So, what would you like me to tell you?
This has been discussed, part-time or what, a full-time position for the town. And, uh, this, with the cost of the brush burnt road, it was kind of put on the back burner, but it has been discussed that this is something the town may do in the future because you can't expect a contractor who's making this money and doing this big job to go up what he's doing with his crew equipment and move to do a culvert just like that. So, it may come down the road, and this next year, the year after the town will try to find someone to do that job, a part-time or full-time position, to do all these different odds and ends. It adds up to a few jobs.
Yeah, but maybe we need to look at an RFP to get someone and just really outline what we need done.
Right.
But it is being talked about in the budget committee. We discussed it, and with Christine, we discussed it. But this was not the year to do it. No year it really is. This was, brush burnt road is a, well, expensive year.
But brush burnt road could tie itself to the next three years.
But we can have that in the plan, just not all one shot, right?
Well, I've been working on brush burnt for the last month. And from what I see, that road, yes, it needs attention, but it's not, it's not half as bad as it seemed to be. I mean, it did get done, it was fourteen years ago. Um, the ditches need some good cleaning. They need to take out some spots. We got new, new tools and stuff, kind of like a hammer, all the lads, and do things right. We never had before. We always had to work with, fuck with your work.
I would discuss the first point, as I asked before with the board, the select board, to allow Steve to get estimates from local contractors and not go through bidding process and not engineer ditching. Other things you don't need to really engineer to save the town, time and money to get that job done. And if we come up short a few dollars finishing part of that project, if Steve could put off some of the non-critical repairs around the town entirely for more brush burnt road, would that, this year's coming budget money? But I don't think we should require engineering creating that, which is not...
I don't think we're looking for engineering currently.
Well, we talked about engineering ditching and things like that.
I don't think there was ever engineering ditching. I think it was...
Well, we did engineer ditching down Sabino, and I got picked apart so bad about the way that I presented that that I don't want to try to do that again.
But I think if Steve discusses from, whether it's Jeremy or Davey Hill, whatever, it gets estimates of what the job will cost. He can estimate, you can put an estimate, and just make it easier and simpler process.
And get it done.
So, we, we have, I believe you got the information on the culverts from the prior road committee. Why don't we address the culverts?
Well, we need to wrap up Kim Murphy. Yes, let's try to stay on track. So, I need some direction here to let her know if we're either gonna be on-site or not.
If we do that, we need to do it before the fifteenth of June, and we need to make a decision on the fifteenth of June. And it needs to be stated clearly that private property is not our, is not the town's responsibility. The culverts on the roads, yes. But this is not the case where the damage is being done by the culverts. That issue has been...
Can we write something up?
Litigated and litigated and litigated and litigated.
And ongoing progress.
Can we write something up as a policy and procedure related to culverts?
Yeah.
That belong to the town and culverts that are personally...
I think you should.
That be our answer?
I think you should. I think we should have something that states who's responsible for what, for starters, to alleviate half of the problem.
Yes, a policy could be written. I'm just thinking about how many scenarios there might be.
Maybe there's thousands of, we're almost gonna make one up for every...
Definitely.
So, basically, what I would do is send her a letter telling that you are your road commissioner, tell her that we do not take care of anything outside the town limit. We, the culvert going across the road does its job. It got plugged up. And that's it.
I thought she was pretty happy after that was...
I thought she was happy after last meeting.
Yeah, I thought that was four, five weeks out, she was pretty happy.
That's what I asked.
Then she says I'm square out or something like that. It's, that never happened.
Are you replacing the culvert?
No, repair it, clean it.
Just leave it? The bottom's gone, huh?
The what happened?
Is the bottom gone or is it just plump?
It's plastic. Plastic. But, you know, we could replace it with an eighteen inch or fifteen inch, but, you know, we're just, we're going down. I mean, if it works, we can actually go down and check it.
If it's not the culvert, that's the issue. That's one kind of thing. If it's not the culvert, then there's no point in replacing it.
Well, replacing it, is that gonna put more water down through it?
Well, it's gonna put a lot more down through that. What she's worried about when a culvert gets passed and plugged, the water goes over the road and down the driveway.
So, it might make sense.
Huh?
So, it might make sense to put a...
So, wouldn't plow it frequently, if ever, after that?
Well, it's a problem. I mean, we got so many leaves down there that fall, and then they get hot, they plug with leaves, and then we get snowstorms and it's slant. I guess it's probably what we need to put on our list to maintain more.
Yes.
Or go back.
The town's only liability comes from not maintaining it. So, if it's bigger whole and then you're, the town is clear. You're on safer ground. You can't... Then you are entirely within the acts of God. If it can be painted that the culvert's the problem, then it kind of swings the liability yet away a lot.
Steve, how much does replacing a culvert cost a park?
Okay, say, say that we replace that culvert, okay? I'll go down and inspect it again. I'll do that. But if, say, we replace that culvert, I mean, that's between three to five thousand dollars. Kind of tape it all back in, riprack the ends, whatever. And it gets plugged up again. It's just gonna happen. What are we gonna do then? It's like, change it to another bigger one? Like I said, lots of leaves and everything hanging out that plug, the water flow goes up. You have Mother Nature drop a six inches of snow, and then three inches of rain. It's, you know?
So, I think, again, after this meeting, we have to have a meeting, or perhaps some session, how we're gonna manage these culverts? How are we gonna manage it with an independent contractor? Or are we gonna replace all these culverts to like, to have them?
That's just it. You got a big storm coming. You got a guy on board. It's, it'd be ideal. You know, for us to go out and say, I call J.I. Hill, and he can go out and check all these things out. Every culvert in the town, it's, it'd be unfeasible.
But if we clean them out in the fall, as a, as a, as a town process, I'll call it fall cleanup.
And I agree.
And they, and they all get it.
Yeah.
You know, you go out, this is not an engineered thing. It's we go out to bid for all town culverts.
Okay, that's a great thing. But then we got a great big wind coming out, and it blows all these leaves and limbs and stuff out of the woods and right back down in that culvert, and that's why it's a risk cleanup. It's an ongoing thing. It would have to be somebody that knows, okay, this is your job. We're getting a big rainstorm. This culvert back up, back up, needs to be checked. It's not like going and cleaning it up.
What do we do with this Murphy?
If you want to do a site visit, then we need to go look at it. And then we need to make the decision.
And you said by...
I said, we should, we should have, we should be ready on the fifteenth. There's no reason why this thing that's been litigated any number of times is being litigated again.
If we're gonna do a site visit, I'm only here from June tenth to the fifteenth. I mean, here beyond the fifteenth, but I'm, I'm gone next week in Dallas. So, I have to be the week of the year.
Well, it doesn't have to be. It's what the majority of the people could do. So, it's, it's Madeline's schedule, my schedule, Steve's schedule. It's everybody's schedule, not one individual, although we need to be...
Understood, just letting you know I'm not...
Okay. So, I assume, and I shouldn't assume anything, you are...
I would be available during the day next week. No, I won't. I have classes on.
So, you, what are you guys doing after this meeting that we get through, quick?
I could go hang out.
Getting done.
All right, all right.
If it's still David.
Yeah, all right. And I'd like to get on our agenda what we're gonna do with our culverts on another meeting, Christine.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
I do have a few more things.
Yep. I just wanted to get that out there so we can start talking about it.
So, I'm actually meeting with the engineer down on Brush Point tomorrow at nine o'clock. We get him, we get the bid to work, whatever we need to put that job out to bid for the erosion. I want to get that started, play that SEP so we get these bids out to people. And then we're gonna walk the road. I want to get suggestions from him, get his opinion, see if he can maybe give me extended ditch and this, and stuff like that, so I can just put out sections of people in and out of town to get this project rolling and get it done. It's either that or say anyhow, five, two hundred fifty thousand dollars take us that way.
Do you have a piece that's more important to, to get done than another?
Well, see, they said we did this project fourteen years ago. Well, we did, we started it fourteen years ago, all the engineers and all that. So, it was actually about ten. And we started at the very end of it, worked our way out. And then the next year, we worked the middle section, and I think worked into the last section after that. And then we paved the whole thing. So, it's basically some sections that I'd like to take care of. Yes, in the places where the road's bleeding and doing stuff like that. Um, the ditches that are running over the road, take care of those places. They just got filled in over the last eight years. But, and I want to make it passable and smoother for the people putting down there.
So, same.
Right. Basically, elbow, I'd like to handle some ledge out there, get some underdrain put in that. Um, Hill has to go down there a lot more than he should have to, sand it, take care of that area, and whatever other dangerous area. And that's what I want to take, you know, down through the engineer and say, hey, this section, this section, this section, how should we put this out to bid and find out?
So, do you think he'll have his response by the next meeting?
Oh, yeah. And Barrett's, he should, he should have everything ready to show you for the bid package on the erosion path in front of Haggins. That's what I'm doing, is just, I'm gonna get that money, spec, get that area fixed. You know, people have been very busy.
Yeah, and it was very clear at town meeting, it's the town... Yeah, and it was very clear at town meeting, it's the town's priority too, so.
Are there other roads that have to be addressed? That's the birth point.
Um, not honestly.
Well, we should talk about your emails, Suzanne, and your concerns about home and car.
Did you give it to Steve?
Yeah. So I was hoping he could talk about that to me.
But that, outside of, are there other roads outside of that road that need addressing? I know that areas mail, but that's not ours.
Right.
Have we called that in?
I do, whatever comes up that needs to be, my concentration is like when we got on the Sabina, we get that done. We don't have much, but I wanna make sure we get the money to make what we promised people a pound of, not. And then once that's done, if we have extra money, maybe we can go down and, and, and that's an emergency. I'm not going to too many other places.
Well, we're, we're losing some Sabina over right when you come off of Barry's mail. We've got some, it's undermining the new pavement.
Yeah, well, stuff like that definitely will get addressed. So.
And there's, and there's the same thing happening up the hill of Fulton Pond. It's that one side is also about that.
Now, when you were talking about seven damaged culverts, are you referring to driveway culverts?
No.
No, it's a good time to put some rip rap there. He is bad. Holton, Holton's Pond?
There's seven culverts going out there. There's the, from Sabina Hall up to the mail block that the town owns. There's culverts there that...
There's not Holton Pond?
That's, that's called Holton Pond, Holton Pond there.
Right, and those, all those culverts aren't bad.
Say, I'm sorry.
Those culverts aren't old bad.
They're, they've sunk in and there's some clod ones in them now.
Yeah, but you gotta get that on the road. They live in Maine, they, they fall back down and stuff, but I'll go check and see if that's any of our city one that needs to be checked.
And there's both, you know, the rip rap that you put in two years ago is one from the last one.
Is it?
Yeah.
And we gotta remember too that, yeah, birth point needs to be our focus because it's...
No, it's covering and, you know, while this, this, obviously, that we, what ledge we had handed out on Holton's Pond a couple of years ago was enough.
Did you...
That's all washed out like that again.
Do we have the software ready to go yet for the, for the culverts? Is that...
We have the software. I have to do some troubleshooting with the state to make sure that I can bring the GPS and everything up the way it needs to be. I mean, it, it could, we could start using it at any time.
Okay. Do we have anybody to enter that information as we schedule?
Steve has some ideas about that too.
Jimmy Wolfson just graduated from college for civil engineering. I could come and ask if he'd be interested in going and doing a, a now thing of all the roads and stuff and punch it into this program for us on his, you know, because he just graduated a couple of weeks ago, looking for some summer work. So hopefully I can get over him. He's, this is what he's done through college for the last four years and if we could, you know, get a hold of that degree.
So you're gonna take the lead on that?
I am already taking it since...
Because I would really like, I think some other people would too, would really like to see this information and...
Oh, I'd love it, yeah.
I'm just hope prioritize and, and keep track of what's, what's...
And then, don't get me wrong, if you see a road being too small in the road, let me know and we're gonna fix it. It's not like we're not gonna, we're just gonna go there. It's just gonna make it smaller.
Is there any way, rather than this, it feels like we always, everything's an emergency. Everything's life or death. Is there any way when we see indentations or, or, I'm just wondering if there's some way to track this through the town hall when somebody reports something or so that we have a record or Tracy just called in town hall on this...
We do have most of it because I, Christine gets the message, she's sent it to me and we got one.
Okay.
Let me explain a little bit right now. So we got three contractors in the town West Bath. Right now, we're all are so busy, we don't even, it's hard to see about why. So going to do a little job on the town is kinda like out of the picture, but if there's a rainy day and something getting done, it's great to just be able to set it out and get it done, but it's all depends on, and I'm trying to keep it under fire now, but it's almost impossible.
But as far as those messages and people calling in, Christine sends them an email to Steve and his receptionist at the office, so I print them. When he pops in the office, reads them on his desk unless they're like an emergency and I call him.
I agree with you, Steve, and I think that's another discussion we need to have. I don't want to pull the ladders on the next meeting, but it's a discussion that needs to be at the, yeah, at the soonest of the, because we only have summer.
Right, it's a short window.
It's a very short window, so. Can we do that in the next agenda?
Yes.
Well, it'd be nice to be able to call Jeremy and Jamie and say, look, if you guys got a slack spell, call me and I can do something new.
And I think the only way, I see it, I've been two years trying to get my floor fixed. I still don't have a contractor.
Yeah, and this, this is a concern because of the way we're structured. It's very difficult to have a contractor mobilize in the timeframe that we would like them to be able to respond to a project.
I can give you a perfect example. I'm supposed to have a bank, I'm supposed to sit up for a settlement and my guy is supposed to come down with a striker today. I call him at nine o'clock, ask him where it was. Oh, the state called, we had a emergency job to go to. I said, I have a bank down here. I think I have a bank that wants to get open. My name, everybody just dropped me and said, I'll, we'll put you back on the schedule. I've been scheduled for a month.
Yeah, it is one of the...
How do you tell your client that?
It's important that we continue discussions about having an authority.
But it's also, by taking the ditching and making it a larger project, it's more attractive if you have a substantial project for a contractor to come in instead of this much ditching, you now have this much ditching and it makes it worthwhile at that point.
Yes and no, because they're so overbooked now that sometimes all they can squeeze in is a little tiny project.
Well, one thing, it's, it's...
You're both right.
To get, to get, to get to our point that we got money to spend, they're not gonna be no long project because it's... And one of the biggest problems, Steve says, if you do bid policy at five thousand dollars, if, if he's been a rainy day and Jamie or Jeremy can do something, five thousand dollars isn't gonna be too much.
We need to, we need to...
And I think...
It doesn't really interest that much.
No, but I think we have this discussion with that if we ever get to an agreement. We come to one saying, we'd like to keep the work in town. We got all these projects. If you don't have anything to do, give me a call. I bet.
Can you, if something happens like that, Steve calls the ones that neither's done to do, can he work with Christine in, in some cases bypass that five thousand dollar stipulation?
I think that's the discussion that needs to be...
I think it's actually done next meeting. It needs to be done. If we run out of this work, something like that needs to be done. Because I'll call Jeremy and say, hey, what do you got coming up? Do you have any openings that you can come down and do some ditch in a section and, or send Jamie or if we go out and we do it, or, you know, messy, you wanna go a little further out of town or you, you know, there's a lot of fight. I might, contractors up there, I need to recap, we'll tell them.
Would the town be comfortable? And thoroughly understand the thought of putting it out to bid. Would the town be comfortable with a man, man hour material equipment rate that if, if a contractor became available, they perform to those rates, that you would be comfortable avoiding bid?
That would be ideal. But the problem is, there's really not a problem. It would work great. I mean, I think, if I can get price, okay, how much an hour for an excavator, how much an hour for a wheel or a triaxle truck, you know, so on later.
Can you get those prices for our next meeting or is that impossible?
No, that's impossible. I have gotten two or three nights before. We had the M B F list of... They've been there before.
Because I think we need to make a decision at the next meeting because again, we have a small window of opportunity that is going to happen.
You need some flexibility. I understand you guys want everything all prepared and I think that's great and, and engineers, I would just raise the cost and value frame up and design up for a small town that we are, that's just...
Probably till we can have our own department of...
But these are...
You need the flexibility so that within the parameters of the current budget, we can agree that within those certain guidelines, Steve talks to Christine and she has the authority to say, yes, go whatever, and that takes care of the flexibility issue. And that gives us a process where the accountability is, is clear.
And it allows us to work within our current structure, which is challenging.
And I think what I also need to do is get me some things from our engineer, does a rough, you know, but you don't have to go exactly like a ditching.
Yeah.
Two, you know, two foot shoulder, two foot ditch, back sole. And have that spec for them to meet in general terms. In general terms, because I know, I know that there's a place where the ledge crops up and stuff, you just can't get it, then, you know, that's understandable. But if we could just have general notes like that, replacing a culvert, have a general thing.
That would be very helpful.
So as a contractor, if we said we have seven miles of ditching that need to be done in the town and we'd like it done in the next three weeks, would that be an attraction to a contractor?
I don't know. We think we have seven miles.
I'm throwing a hypothetical, or we had seven culverts that had to be replaced. Can you do them in a short timeframe?
I think you'd be put on a waitlist and, yeah.
Yep.
You, you are too.
It's not, it's not a one of, it's now seven. So is it, and that's my point, is it, if we bolted to a job, does it become more attractive and then become a priority?
I say, um, I don't think so.
Modeling more practical if you give them the package of seven, but give them no deadline to do it.
Yes.
You gotta give a deadline.
That's the problem is mostly...
If you can't anybody...
Can we afford seven? That's the other thing right now. Can we afford seven culverts to be replaced when we're working on birth point?
If we may, we shouldn't have seven culverts like that if we didn't have four, three or four.
It's an idea, Suzanne. I see where you're going and it makes a lot of sense, but it makes a lot of sense for a bigger town.
If it wouldn't make a lot of sense six years ago, then it was more, more labor available.
Well, don't worry. I mean, all the contractors are so busy that they might be able to squeeze in with culvert halls up here and there.
Well, it's not like that.
But that's, but if they had all seven to do and then they could do one, one, two on their schedule, so they could kill it.
On their schedule, that way.
But it's on their, but as long as you meet our deadline of acts.
Yeah.
You can do two here, one there, one there.
You just have to be very lenient with your deadline.
Well, that's not, I'm just, you know, because then it, then it becomes, it's up to them on how they do it as long as they get it done by acts.
Yeah, so you lose your whole count, kind of budget that I made, all of them, seven.
No, no, I'm just, and I'm not saying, I'm just, I'm, I didn't even know what you have...
Well, see, what I'm trying to say there is the, the project is a, it's gonna eat up our budget. So if we keep it small and get things done great, instead of trying to stretch it right out.
Do you have any...
We just don't have that kind of money to work with. That, you're definitely correct.
I'm trying to figure out how to spend the money the best way, the most longevity at the town.
Great, but this town isn't big enough or budget enough to do it that way. We don't have it.
We could throw all the money in, in one year and then again, three years and then three years and do everything at once. It would be, but...
Right. I mean, you would have to, well, probably take a loan up to five million dollars and do it the way that she wants to get it stretched out.
Do you have anything else on your...
I think that's, that, nothing. We gotta have somebody upset from Rockweed and the other one, that culvert, they need to replace it, but it's another driveway culvert and it's, so they haven't even been here, they can't even see it anymore.
Well, we'll do it one other time.
But that, that comes to, if you give us the, here's, if you're, if the culvert is in your driveway, it is your, and that's where we want the written standard.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, but it's your responsibility. And then it's not you, it's the town's position on a standard.
Because the town didn't put that culvert in there. They didn't need that culvert. That's how I look at it.
And I, but I think that it's, it's an answer that we just give out.
Now, I would do, since I do road commission or so.
Anything else on your agenda, Suzanne?
I have one more item that I might see to just stay for.
Okay. Well, who's the one to, to Murphy's first?
But somebody needs to call her first, make sure she's around because she is going to want to be there. Main D O T.
Well, I prefer just to meet with the selectmen and stuff and explain it without nobody going in a bunch of stuff.
You might wander out.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay. Main D O T will meet with whomever here on Wednesday, June seventh at one thirty P M to discuss the West Bath State Road cross culvert.
Can you repeat that date?
June seventh at one thirty. And we're gonna meet here rather than onsite. So I need to know who you would like to have at that meeting and if there's going to be the quorum of the select board, it needs to be public.
I would be here.
I would like to attend. I have some questions and concerns after talking with different people.
I would like to contend and I'd like for Dave Paquette to attend and maybe a manager from whoever's. I know that Ted made a comment last time he was here, that the culvert isn't being taken by Webb, but if I open that culvert up, clean it up, that it's gonna feed from that pond back in the Webb's dock area.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I would like you to be here because of the controversy on Bull Rock and certain people saying that the town is responsible for that issue. So we need to come to an understanding of who is responsible for what.
And who owns the state road.
The culvert that runs under Bull Rock.
Well, I would say that's how West Bath, that would be their responsibility because the, the road goes across, it's the same as they...
So we need to all get on the same page.
That's what we need to scan for.
To figure out who's responsible for what issue.
So, all right, this also about the parking lot piece?
Yes.
Should the planning board be invited?
Well, this is why I'm asking because I don't know how much you wanna open this up.
So there's an interesting comment, Steve, that was made, I don't know if it was at the planning board meeting or if it was at our meeting. I actually think that it was at our select board meeting, that the Bath Water District put in their water pipe and that may have brought the level of the culvert up?
No.
Are we sure about that?
I think Perry was saying was that they only put the culvert, so one more has the water pipe.
Bath water passes down five feet. They'd have to go at least five feet for frost protection. So the Bath Water Pipe update, none of their pipes are, is maximums five foot, nah, or foot six. That's the doggy pipe and they have to cover it for that. That's why you see blasting and everything else going.
But did that cause that culvert to come up, the, the culvert now that's in question for Crocker?
I have no idea.
Because Crocker was there first and then the water pipe went in second.
But Crocker put the water pipe in second.
You know, I, I really have concerns and I wish I had talked to people more before at the last meeting, but what is West Bath doing? Do we have a good vision of where we wanna be? And we're putting a parking lot, increasing the cars there. We're not worried about our kids and the school buses. We're not worried about B I W when they drive like idiots. We're not worried about the residential area that is on that road and I have concerns with all of that stuff. I feel like it doesn't matter if you live on the state road. For you, you're gonna be commercial and that bothers me.
Yeah, I'm, I understand that. I'm not, I, I agree with that. The problem is that he owns that land.
We don't have to do anything he wants with it. I mean, what, what, do we have a traffic impact? Have you seen the, have you sat there and watched your kids get off that school bus and almost get hit? Would you allow that on the phone calling? Would you allow that in Sabina? No, you wouldn't. You care more about your school kids than what we're caring about the kids on the state road. And I have a problem with that.
Yeah, we need to focus on what our ordinance allows and what the state allows, so.
I, I...
And that's why the planning board is struggling, you know, can we permit this project or not?
Because there's no, there's no battery that's on there for that particular, I mean, and that's the problem is we have, we have to follow what our current ordinance allows. And that, whether you like it or not, I mean, that's, that's kind of a legal piece of that.
But I see Bath all the time in traffic impacts before they make any of these two... But I see Bath all the time do traffic impacts before they make any of these decisions, they just know, oh, it's gonna bring a little bit of money into our town.
It's what they're, it's not gonna bring any money into the town for us.
Thing is, let's do it, so I, I just have concerns that maybe we need to look at our ordinance, if we put a little bit more teeth into them, and have more rules and regulations with traffic impacts.
I agree with that, a hundred percent.
So, who would you like to be at that meeting, that, are you planning on being there?
I have June seventh, one thirty, I will, I will let my professor know that I may be in Zoom class late. It's also spicy pizza day for planning.
It is, but that's only till one.
Right.
Okay.
You say it's at one thirty, I mean?
Yeah.
I presume that you're excited invitation to somebody in the planning.
Well, this is why I'm asking, who do you want to be there, how much do you want to open it up?
Well, I think we have two sides, and it's not fair just to invite one on the planning board, so I think if you're gonna have planning board people there, we need all sides represented. Or those who wish to be there. Right. If, I don't think you can exclude anybody, because there's different, there's different. If both Kathy and I are gonna be there, we have to make an.
Okay, yes, okay, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
I don't think we should be narrowing it down to one person's opinion that we need.
No, I, I think, I think the planning board generally should be included.
I think that's what they did last, I think that happened before, and went in and treated a bunch of people, and that was it.
Can't do that.
That's the quickest way to fix it, and we'll go with it.
So my understanding is it's going to be Travis, who is a region manager, and one of the engineers, I think the region engineer. So it will be two people from M D. So when I will, I'm gonna let Allison know, and I'm willing to let the constituent services person from M D, I'll let her know too. In case she's interested.
And then the last thing with roads that I remember, did we ever get any response with which framework, we settled now, because it's summer and the issue's gonna re- or technically happen.
It's gonna come back.
Well, that's a D O T issue too, I mean, it's.
Yeah, but I wanna make sure this meeting that we're focusing on the issue is.
So do you think we get another meeting later?
I think so.
I think that you might want to call them and tell them you got two issues, so you better.
Yeah, while you're here.
I, I think this meeting can take a significant amount of time, I think we need to have two separate meetings, so that people don't lose their focus.
Sounds good.
We need to get this issue resolved for the planning board.
And what is the issue? To get lower the culvert, or?
Well, there is a question about the observation of the culvert.
Who's responsible for the water backup, essentially?
Why does this fall get bigger?
Certain people think it's Croker's responsibility, others think it's the town's responsibility, some think it's the state's responsibility.
Right.
Let's try to figure this out.
Yep, well, I tend to agree with a lot of it's the state's responsibility, because how many times have you gone up over the hill towards the transfer station, and all that dirt rashes down around in there, and appointment day, the culvert, like that culvert actually results, or and I think if it's all living in it, appease one another, hopefully not.
Right. Okay, anything else, Christine?
I can't think of anything road related, but I do have other items.
Okay.
I just wanted to update you on the revaluation timeline. Today was Ron's last day, he packed up and moved out, it was kinda sad. Letters are going to be sent out to all owners of taxable property within the next few weeks with projected property value and projected mil rate. Parker appraisal will be, will meet with taxpayers by appointment only the week of July seventeenth. And there will be information in the letters that go out, that explain to people how they can make appointments to discuss their property values.
Do you have an estimate as to what the mil rate is at right now?
The best that Jess could figure right now, and she's still playing with it, it'll be around eight, is what she's projecting. But because of the way we commit taxes, and not knowing how much we take from sources other than taxation when they commit taxes, it's kind of a shot in the dark.
How far are we along with our annual, the audit, yes, as far as we can fore?
I am not sure when we're gonna see that. I think Julie's been talking to Brewer's office consistently, so I can ask her for an update.
Christine, are property cards gonna be available before public meetings?
I didn't catch that.
Property cards.
Oh, property cards?
Are they going to be available prior to?
What's being sent out?
No, I didn't ask, I don't.
They won't be sent out with the letter?
They won't be sent out with the letter.
No, no.
But I haven't talked to Jess, I'm assuming once the letters go out, people will be able to request their property cards, but I don't know.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that, I'm not sure how that happens.
Because taking care of number of bedrooms, number of bathrooms, that thing can just go away quickly and easy without anybody yelling and screaming, but I highly advocate for that.
Okay. The town vote. I was wondering if the select board might consider offering our vote to Saginaw County, so that the officers that are patrolling for us could perform the water testing, which is done approximately eight times a year. Then they would have a vote, and I haven't talked with you already, I don't know about this yet, I wanted to ask you first, but I think it might be helpful to Saginaw County to have a vote, a vote available for their purposes, and to assist the towns with enforcement.
It would also make it more possible for such things as approaching persons who are illegally harvesting when the tide is in, doing the breaking in places where our ordinance forbids that. It would mean that they could have access to those people while they're doing what they're doing, without having to stand on the shore and take pictures.
Right.
So you're, this is to go to other towns too, I mean, they're gonna?
Yeah, it would be, I mean, Saginaw County would own the boat.
And I always wonder what our liability was going into private boat.
We have a fair amount of liability owning a boat, and we've had issues in the past.
Yeah, that's my concern.
And I think it would probably.
And the fire department.
The fire department is a mortgage.
Desire to keep it.
And they have to house it right now, so I'm not too crazy about that. It's something I'd like to talk with Joel about.
Do you have any expert value?
No, but if you're amenable to it, I can do some more research.
I think it's a good idea to explore it. I think a law note would save us from a huge lawsuit in the future, currently the way we're doing water testing. And this debris over becomes more prevalent, those things will be more important. I think it makes sense, if they'll, if they'll take it, I think it's, it makes sense to offer it. So why don't you find out approximate value and have a conversation with Joel, see if he's even willing to consider taking it, and we'll discuss it.
Another time.
Another time.
Okay, that sounds good. The committee procedures policy, we talked about having it on tonight's agenda, but I forgot to send it to all of you before I went on vacation. So I printed out copies to make it easier. I was planning on having it on the next agenda, but I think the next agenda is gonna be a little packed with other more pressing issues.
Yeah.
But basically, what we need to do with this policy is determine based on our conversations in January, whether or not it should be updated further. Is there anything else that we should include to clarify due reason responsibilities with the staff and committee members? So that's really what we're after, and if you say no, we're all set.
And let's read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's be with, right, not the next year.
So a longer one?
Yeah, and be prepared. Not postpone for the phone, let's be prepared, make a decision, what can be added, don't be added.
It'll be a July sixth meeting, is that the next one?
Okay.
And the last item I have is Ron's retirement party, which is Saturday, June tenth, beginning at noon, at the fire hall, and the community is invited to participate in a vigorous. So Ron knows.
It's not regular or pig, right?
It's not regular or pig. So anybody who would, who would like to attend, it's open.
You can put it on the website.
Yeah.
Put on a big fire sign.
Yeah, and we're looking at, you know, just between noon and two, so that people can get on what they're.
On to their.
When the long die starts. Oh, that's right, David, sorry, I forgot you had.
Oh, this is not even ready, we just got details today. Over the past several months, I discussed with Christine about the broken post, granite post at the Maryville Cemetery. There were two down, and one is in a pin placement, it's kinda shaky, and Steve Reno, Al Inzey, Good Coast Granite, and Tim Dale at Page Monument have agreed to absorb the cost of materials and labor to dig out the old broken posts and install the new ones, two or three optimizations, and no cost to the town, if the town would like to proceed with that.
I, I move the town, except that very generous author, I second it, on paper.
Okay.
Oh, and I also ugly, dead flowers still down there on those berries mellows you just entered, and there's two big pots of flowers, they're dead, and they're gross looking, and they're just kinda sitting there.
Well, I think that Eagle Scout has stuck hanging for them, so the town perhaps can if they'd like to, but he's.
We should do something, it's horrible.
I'm not sure the timeframe on this, they have to order the post, and then coordinate.
The two cancers concerned, he was dropping those flowers in for two years after his Eagle project?
So, I'm not sure the timing, so we'll, 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 and I'll check it back with Christine and let us know later.
I volunteered to put in some pansies. Thank you, I appreciate that. Took that sometime. It's just, it's just an eyesworn, you know, I was like, they don't care if they're dead. Well, my, my ancestors were there, so I just.
Okay, and he started it, this is my keeper going, he's a kid.
If, well, and there wasn't any responsibility for his Eagle Scout project, that he should have a lifetime of father visits. Anything else, Christine? Any public comment?
Just to finish off that, the posting, which was done, I think the town should certainly send letters thanking his efforts.
Keep us posted on. Speaking of letters, did we ever wanna get those letters out to new businesses that we ordered a year ago?
That's kind of low on our priority list right now, so.
And we did not assign responsibility for that when we did that, so. Any other public comment? I make a motion adjourn and head down with the road commission to look at a culvert.
Second.
I need to use the meeting.
Will this be a culvert operation?
Yeah.
We don't know yet.